Please stand. I'm the lead minister of the United States of America, and to the republic, for which it stands, my nation, I'm my God, and I will do whatever it takes to justify.
So, welcome. So Deb is online tonight, and everybody on the board is present. We have Bob Jones, Mike Beecher, Jessica Vanort, Perry Brown, Rich Hullett, and I'm Kristen Powers. And welcome, everybody else. I think we all know each other. If you want to address the board tonight, you have to address the chairman, Mike Beecher, and please introduce yourself before you speak, should you decide to do so. So we have a bunch of additions due to when I sent it out. There was nothing on the agenda out of the ordinary, so everything that's on the agenda is an addition. So Judy Coolidge and Gib Mac has also requested to be a pre-requested appearance. A couple of grants to talk about on the highway report portion. There's been an auditorium use request from the library under the facilities report. Information that came from the constables about the ORI number, which is continued discussions from last meeting, and those are the only additions that I recorded. Does anybody else have anything?
I have some grant things in old business and one grant opportunity in new business.
And the minutes that need approval are from July 11th of 2023.
Will we approve those minutes?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried. Judy.
I'm here to just offer our thanks and our appreciation for your support on Saturday, referred to. It was spectacular, well-attended. I understand maybe up to 300 people perhaps, and everything went off great. The AC upstairs is amazing. And I just have a little something that I'm gonna give you guys, just as the little token of our appreciation.
Whole treat for after.
No, it's a little cupcakes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks again for everything.
The event, I'm gonna add, the event was great. Good job. Yes, congrats to the Historical Society.
Some of our, some of the board members spent a couple hours going one by one by one, looking at the photos and identifying them, and it was fun. It was awesome.
Any announcements?
Oh, Gib is here.
Okay. Gib.
Thank you. I've been working on the idea for the electric vehicle charging. I've not drawn up a plan yet, but it probably is going to be parallel to the highway on the upper side where it'd be open for general public parking as well. And I'm getting a plan together. I've put together a solar plan for the solar of it. It'll all be green. It'll be batteries, and it's all gonna be direct. As long as the batteries are staying charged good, it won't draw off the grid at all to run four charging stations. And I checked with the state of Vermont on highway right-of-way for over there, as well as nothing in front of the store, and I'm still negotiating with the highway district about that, but it's going good.
Great. Thank you. Any announcements?
Uh, no.
We're good with announcements? Anything from the zoning administrator?
Yes. Nancy emailed me. Okay, so there was a conditional use permit hearing with the DRB on July 19th, the Politic Planning Commission meeting last night on 7/24, continued discussions and review of the updated, of the bylaw updates. Scanning of zoning records has slowed as I prioritize day-to-day activities, and Nancy is currently working on 2017. And the addendum to that was that Nancy power washed the town hall on her own time. Oh, bravo Nancy. Let's applaud Nancy. That's that for the zoning.
Do you have a report? I do. Nancy stole a little of my thunder there, but the planning commission did meet last night, Monday, July 24, and spent most of the meeting working on the bylaw updates, which are funded by our bylaw modernization grant. We nearly finished going line by line through the current bylaws and discussing the edits, which were suggested by Ed Boe from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. We're also considering several edits suggested by zoning administrator Nancy Morino. We hope to complete this bylaw work at our September meeting. So, short and sweet.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any questions for the planning commission? Road foreman's report. They have some grant agreements.
Do you have anything for the report?
So I had a chance to meet with Dale, but I know they'd finished the putting slate on the white road. They finished that project. And I'm still waiting on a couple of numbers for trucks, for town trucks, but I think we've pretty well nailed down the one that we're most comfortable with. And we looked at the budget, and I think, I haven't been on the board long enough to have been here when you purchased your last truck, but I think what you did was finance the truck, and then you had hoped that you had enough money in the budget to outfit the truck?
Yes, that's correct.
Well, so we, of course, upfitting is quite a bit more than it was. So there's $75,000 in the budget right now, and the outfit is 90. So, we're short $15,000 there, so we've gotta decide what we're gonna do about that. So that's where we're at.
So, in previous years, we've got, we've got loans, you know, private loans, not financed through, we've handled the financing, so I guess we could probably just get the loan big enough to handle the truck and the outfit, the rest of what we needed for the outfit. We could say we need this for the combination, and it would be to two different places, correct?
That's right. Viking and whichever dealer we were.
And the truck dealer.
Going with, right.
Would that something you could look into and see how we could go about doing that? Then we could just say we're putting X amount down on a truck that's gonna be $200,000 plus, right?
Yeah.
I couldn't quite hear that out.
I can get the figures. I can start communicating with some banks.
And I can get those to you.
That's about it for going on. I see they dug out all the blacktop and went to Politic by the old dump and filled that in to hopefully get that to stabilize.
Yeah, he's in there. Riley's working that quarry again, and he's pumped it right out. So the best thing for us to do right now, we're in no danger of losing the road, but every time it fills up and then they pump it back down, and it fills up and they pump it back down, it's gonna continue to settle out a little. So the best approach right now is just dig it out, let it settle throughout the summer, and then just before winter, we'll top it.
And that's it going on as far as highway?
They've been doing some roadside mowing, some grading. They had some washouts. Nothing major, but they had to touch up some roads.
Judy.
I'm gonna do something down here by the bridge. The brush is getting so there's like this much room crossing the bridge and all this yellow or poison parson or whatever that is and weeds along the, along the edge.
I can mention that to them.
And then the grant agreement. So the town was off, or was awarded the bridge grant, the structures grant, which we applied for. So the award amount was $200,000 with a 20% match, and the quote that we obtained for that was about a $300,000 project. So, in going through the bid, it doesn't really appear that there's much of in-kind service that the town and the highway department are going to be able to offer, so in theory that means that there's $120,000 of which the town would have to pay for, for this bridge project here on School Street. So, it is, there's a 30, I think it's 30 months of working time, so it has to be completed, and the reimbursement request has to be in by December 31st of 2025. So the town just needs, we just need to think about if that's something that's in our wheelhouse.
We'd have to budget it then in our next budget, the one we do in November, and we'd have to then do it after July of next year.
Yes, well, it can be spread apart throughout two work seasons, two fiscal years, so.
I think the challenge is when they come to do it, they're gonna wanna do all of it at once. They're not gonna wanna set up twice to do it. So that would just be, that'd be a challenge, trying to do it that way.
How bad is that bridge?
It's gonna need to be freshened up. I mean, it needs to be.
As it stands now, when you look at the report from the state, it's approved. It's deemed as being safe, but I know that Dale's thought was with what happened in Poltonee when they had that pretty catastrophic bridge failure, and then there, it was just a major, major upset to how that town functioned. So while the bridge is okay right now, it's not going, it's not getting any better. And the reason why it's going to be so expensive is because the surface of the bridge needs to be redone. What's happening is the surface is deteriorating, and that is compromising the integrity of the structure, so the structure needs to be repaired and repainted, and there's currently lead paint on that. So the lead paint needs to be removed, and there needs to be scaffolding, so it doesn't all go down into the water, and then it needs to be resurfaced. So, that's a big bulk of the project. So we got the grant agreement. I'm pretty certain I sent it to everybody through email, so it just, we need to determine, I don't know if you wanna take some more time to think about it and talk about it, but we have the agreement in our hands, and we need to sign that and send it back if it's something that we wish to accept, so.
Something that might lengthen it out a little bit is to clean the road salt off it in the springtime. It gets quite a bunch of road salt on there that just sits there. That'll take the surface right off it, year after year after year.
I don't know why it stopped, but the fire department used to wash all the bridges in town for many, many years, and I don't know if it became a liability issue or just got lost somewhere, but I'm sure that it could be a reasonable thing to do. Always wash the road surfaces and the sides of all the bridges.
That's a great idea.
In the spring, it was, it was common, you know, once the, once we were sure there was no more salt going down, every bridge got washed in town on our side, and I think you guys always did it on your side too, right Gib? So, I don't know. I'm sure that if we approach a fire department's moving forward, that would be certainly something they could do. This bridge project right here, it, the biggest thing about this bridge is if, if we don't act before we have to, there's no alternative. We'd have to fix up Chat Clark Road. You know, I mean, it's, there's really.
Right, yeah, no, I agree.
And my thought on it is that if we don't take the grant now, and we do have to repair it in like three years or something, we'll be footing the whole bill ourselves, not just the $120,000 of it, so.
And it may very well be that with the flooding situation that's been going on, you know, the state might not have money the next round for something like this where there's bridges that were damaged that need to be repaired, you know? So, we probably should grab it where we got it and try and figure out how we can make it work.
And the quote that came from, I think Daniels was the outfit, that was the initial quote, and so there, there could potentially be an opportunity to talk to them and see what's absolutely essential. And my understanding is from Patrick Wilson, who is the grant, you know, representative from the granting agency, it seems like, you know, we have the $200,000, so we have to spend that, all of that. So if there is an opportunity to get the price down a bit, I don't think that that's a problem. But I'm not necessarily sure what could be cut from it, from what I've seen, so.
So what are they saying af, once we do the work? What's the lifespan? How many years before it's gonna be gone again? It's gonna have to go over it again?
I'd be surprised if that's anything that's ever gonna come in writing, you know?
You know, but.
It's probably, you know, that this scenario says that in most cases.
I mean, it depends.
You know, three years, three years down the road, they say, yeah, we gotta take that one-lane bridge out. You gotta require to put in this million-dollar double-lane bridge, and then, so then we're out.
It also depends if we have a flood. If there's a big flood and the whole thing washes away.
It's not going anywhere.
I mean, this bridge has met our standards. It meets the state road and bridge standards, which is why, part of the reason why we're eligible to apply for funding, so I don't anticipate the state telling us that we need to put in a different bridge, per se. I mean, there was an option for, another option would be to widen this bridge and make it a proper two-lane bridge, but I believe that was about a $500,000 project. And the grant fund, the max that you can get for this grant is still just $200,000.
I think that, you know, there's plenty of what ifs, but right now, we have, we have an option that, that's a viable option. I think we can probably make work. Can we put money from one year's budget away? We can with highway department, right? Say we had $50,000 extra or something in the highway department, could we earmark that for next year to go to that bridge project?
So you have a fund balance from the road from your year, which you had a decent one in the highway. The law about funds that are highway funds having to stay highway funds is, has been repealed, so they don't have to anymore. We have kept ours separated. So there is that. We also did budget $100,000 for paving, and I don't know if you have anything that you were definitely gonna do this year, the year that we're in right now. So you have some of that, and then if you can put, so I mean, you have some liquidity in, in money.
So we could say, say we only have $50,000 of the $100,000 in paving, we could take that other 50 and put it toward next year's the bridge project possibly, or?
Yeah, you could put it, you would just put it in your budget that's voted on, like we did with the general fund budget this year. We had a surplus. You don't have surplus to do that with, because you didn't end up with a surplus in the highway, but, but there is money that exists in the fund balance.
There's ways that we can make sure that we have the extra money we need to take advantage of this, this option that we have.
Yeah, and if we can spread it over two years, it'd be great.
Okay. So I guess probably we need to do a little bit more. Rich, do you know if there's any other contractors out there, or?
They were the only ones that were willing to give a price on it. We could spend some more time trying to find somebody else that would come and do that, but we're grateful to have them be willing to even price it. I mean, they're all over the place.
Right, and they've done work for us before too, but I was just, just curious for, you know, because nowadays, there's not a lot of people that do anything anymore, so.
We can spend some more time looking around.
I don't know that it would be worth it, but you know, maybe Patrick would know any other people that do bridge work in the state or something like that. Isn't there like a kind of a pre-approved status for some contractors?
Yeah, yeah, there is, and this was the only one.
That was the only one that was pre, okay. That's, I guess that was what I was trying to ask, so I just went a long way about it, so.
And this agreement does outline the scope of work that's based on the quote that we got from Daniel, so if we were to get a different quote, we would then have to resubmit that to the state and make sure that they were fine with it, which I'm sure they would be, or actually, I'm not sure, but hopefully they would be, but that's just something to keep in mind.
So one of the few things we would say is, is there any possible way that we could split it up into two pieces, you know? Do they have to have the top off to do all the lead mitigation and stuff, or can they do that one year and then resurface the top the following year?
I would think they'd have to have it off to really clean those beams. I mean, you gotta have just the beams exposed if you're really gonna clean them.
So what do they have to do? Take half of the bridge apart, clean it, and we have one-way traffic?
No, I think they're gonna have to close it.
They're gonna have to close the bridge.
Yeah.
It is all, their whole, like, work program is all right in here, if you wanna see it.
I mean, that's, that's just a one-lane bridge.
Yeah, there's no way you could get, yeah. Interesting.
This outfit didn't know that they were the only one in the running at that point in time, so they were offering a competitive, as best they could probably, which is good news.
Gib.
On the other two bridges going up 133, they took the side rails off and actually ended up widening, widening the bridges. I realize it would not make it too lame. Why? But it might be more beneficial for bigger truck use and agriculture use and everything if they could do that. And if they're gonna strip that down to the frame, that might not be a bad way to go about getting those out, and then they put like stanchions on the sides. I wondered how come they didn't do that with that bridge to begin with when they did those other two on 133, other than the fact I realize that's a state district that they were doing there, and this is town, but.
And we did have a, we did get a quote on widening that bridge throughout this whole process, and that was around 500 grand, and the grant was still 200. So, we've gotta decide whether we wanna come up with 100 or 300 on the, you know, town.
It's like deciding if you wanna move forward or stay where you are.
Okay. Frank?
I had mentioned it before, but if you took a whole bunch of long-term projects and kinda added it up, including some of the roads that need to be done, you got a pile estimate for how much the whole kit and kaboodle costs, and you've got a bond for like 25 or 30 years, that would stretch it out and reduce the overall cost to the taxpayer, because that would be like a piece of taffy. It's gonna spread out over a longer number of years, which would reduce the taxes, but you'd still have the benefit, even though you would have to get a bond to do it. And you have, and you could buy, pre-buy your, all your material for your tops and store it someplace at today's non-inflated rates, and today's lower fuel rates, today's lower trucking rates, and make, maybe make out like a bandit for the taxpayer over the long haul, and have everything right here, ready to go.
Thank you for that input. So, what do we wanna do with this grant? Do we need to sign it this week, or do we wanna do a little bit more discussion?
I think we should have some more discussion on it, you know, and if, you know, if a bunch of folks think that, that maybe we ought to consider widening it, widening the bridge, maybe we should look at that as well, before we pull the trigger on it.
Okay. So we'll bring this back around in the next highway report in two weeks, please. Gib.
Perry just said that there's old abutments from the old bridge that was there, which was called the Lackey or the Forksdale Bridge before, and is there a possibility that they could put a Bailey Bridge in there, like they're doing over on Route 4? I mean, if you're gonna go to this expense, you're gonna, you gotta stop this road, I mean, one way would be, I don't know, maybe the state will step in and say it's, it's a danger to close the road. Maybe you can put a temporary one in. Maybe there's a way you can find some more money to do that, keep that road open, and then do a major improvement on the bridge.
Yeah, I mean, we can talk with, we'll get the other quote as well and look that one over.
I mean, it's worth looking at, if you're going to that expense. You're spending $30 million, so what if you spent half or six or whatever and really did an upgrade?
We weren't really convinced we could afford 100 to paint it. So, I mean, that's, but, you know, we can.
But that deck holds water all the time. And that, that's a major issue.
And that bridge was built in the 30s.
Actually, they poured those scuppers full, so they get, so they don't get rid of the water.
Didn't they have to because?
They did have to, because the water was running into the river, so.
Frank?
That chunk of money that Devin Neary was talking about when he came down, he says it's unlimited, would that apply for something like this?
I'm not sure. I want to bring up during old business the, what Devin was talking about. Talking about, yeah.
Okay. So that was the structures grant, and now we got the fiscal year 24 grant today.
So we've also been awarded $15,000 for the grants and aid for fiscal year 24. I want to, I did not, I was not able to connect with Dale, and I'd like to, before the board decides on that, just get with him and make sure we're, there were some discussions about what was happening with the fiscal year 23 funding and whether or not they were gonna be able to get to that in the appropriate time, so I just, before we sign off on next year, so we can add, if it's okay with everybody, we'll add both to the next meeting, so I can have an opportunity to talk to him first.
Is there any more discussion under the road foreman? Thank you. Assessors? Town clerks, Mammo? Deb?
Yeah, the only thing that I need you guys to do tonight is just reword the motion on the, with the license to include, it's not in the name of Mark McChesney, it's in the name of his new catering business, not the barn restaurant. It's on the, the two applications are right there.
He'll do that.
I can't remember, the Haystack Catering LLC.
Catering LLC, yeah, that's what it is.
Bob made the motion.
I'll make a motion that we change that.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried. Thank you, Deb.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have anything for me?
Anything else? Guess not, Deb. Thank you for joining us.
Yep. Good night.
Good night. You got it, Judy?
Two warrants this week. Payrolls $5,938.8. Accounts payable $24,890.64. The accounting of that is general fund $18,755.25, highway $10,703.65, and the waste water $5,369.82. My tax bill backers and my stickers and every, and envelopes that I've ordered have arrived, and I'm ready for tax bills as soon as we finalize the rates, which is next. So I left a Excel spreadsheet there with the calculation, the 411 from the list or the assessors' office, and also just a tax book page with these calcs put into Nemrick to show that we're generating enough funds there in the pile that's to, so it will be my left. But anyways, my recommendation for the general fund is .2717, highway .3069, and the local agreement .0067. If those are approved, then with the homestead education rate that has been set by the state of 16379 and non-homestead of 1.7175, the total municipal and education combined homestead tax rate would be 2.2232, and non-homestead would be 2.3028. So we need to approve those rates and also decide if you wanna approve the 3% late homestead filing penalty. I'm gonna do that, and then I'll do.
Anybody have any questions about the tax rate? Does anybody have any questions about the tax rate? Pretty much nothing we could do about it. It is what it is, so.
It's based on what we already decided.
Right. And and the voters decided.
Yep.
Make the motion that we use those Julie's numbers.
Bob made the motion.
I'll second.
Jessica seconded. Is there any more discussion about the tax rate? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Thank you, Julie.
Did you want to approve, did you want to do the 3% late homestead filing penalty?
I didn't quite get that.
The 3% late homestead filing penalty, you have to decide on whether or not you want to approve that.
Okay.
Have we had that in the past? Is it the same?
We have.
It's it's normally we do, but we just have to approve it each year.
Every year.
Okay. Somebody want?
I'll make that motion.
Bob made that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion made and seconded for a 3% late fee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Um, and then next is setting the wastewater rate. So I left you, yeah, with the paper book, I left you several options.
Everything but that today.
So basically, it started with, we have the 3%.
I'll just, I'll hit it to you when I'm done.
Yeah, all different options.
Yeah, they're all different options. Okay.
I didn't look at that, it was the only page I didn't look at. Okay.
So it ranged from utilizing none of the appropriation to offsetting the rates to using all of it, which all of it is what we did last year. And so I had like splitting the middle and then doing exactly what I had predicted we would do in budgeting, which was almost all of it. And just for reference, our rates this year were was 929.60 or 929.90, something like that. So even if we use the whole 15,000, it goes up above 1,000 for the users. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't use the whole 15,000 like we did last year. I mean, people are still going to have a hard time with a rate increase of $100.
Actually, suggestion.
That's the the 200 is the split four-way split. That's 15,000. That puts it down to 1,013.20 or 1,014.02. Or 11.36 or 10.74. So for a user fee, the the least would be 1,013.20. If we put $15,000 on the transfer. If we put 14,900, it'd be $1,014.2 a year. If we put 7,500, it's $1,074.67. And zero would be $1,100.36. And fif- and fif- or 11,136.15. So. If we put the 15,000, we can knock it down 120 bucks a household, basically. Right? Somewhere in that.
From the from the top of that, yeah.
Right, from if we if we put nothing to the 15,000, if the $15,000, if we put that on there, we'll knock it down 120, you know, and change.
We put the 15,000 last year and it worked out fine. It didn't break the bank, so.
Yeah, I'm on board with that.
I think that sounds like I made a motion to do the 15,000.
Yep. And Rich seconded?
Yeah, I'll second that.
So the motion is to do the 15,000? What, let's, Julie, how should we work this motion? I can't just write to do the 15,000.
Write, write 1, 2, 3, 4 on them and go with option 4.
Some motion made to proceed with option 4.
As presented.
Is this option 4? Okay, this is option 4.
There you go.
This is the one from transfers 15,000. Yeah, so this is the one we're going to go with. All right.
Any more discussion, Frank? Uh, has, there was some discussion about is whether or not the state is taking over that property with a barn if there's a hook up there for for sewer because the state would then have to pay that sewer fee to the town for that barn, for the storage freight barn, freight shed. And there might be some people out there that have multi-unit. At this at this point right now tonight, we that can't, that has no effect on this, but we'll keep working on that. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Thank you, Julie, for working that out.
I wrote a letter to go along with it, and if you just look at the bottom part of it, because I know we have discussed having like a don't flush inappropriates things.
I did, I did read that today.
We are urging that all users please only flush toilet paper and other. I won't read the other part, but flush what you're supposed to flush.
Right.
Everyone's okay with that? I, we had a similar letter that we that Jill had sent around to one specific.
Martha?
Mike, I have a general question about property taxes. Will we be assessed at the same amount on our home and property as we were the previous year, or is that changing?
I believe that that there's a different factor in West Polit Village than there is like where you live. Are you, is, can you answer that, Julie?
Is the question whether or not the assessed value of your house has changed this year? No, unless you got a notice from the assessor's office, like in the springtime that they had changed your assessed value, the assessed value is going to be what it was the year before, until we you do an improvement on your property or the townwide reappraisal occurs.
And right now, we're planning on a town, we are, we are, have been told by the state, we have to do a townwide reappraisal. But there aren't, isn't anyone available at this moment. We'll probably end up doing that in 2026. Is that the most recent?
I think about five years out before, but the state has a whole bunch of ideas. So there's there's a lot because of how the fluctuation of the market in the last couple of years. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you. Thanks, Julie. Okay.
And then the last thing on my memo is that the in the investment accounts, some portion of our investments were set at six months. And so those have matured and are now being held in a sweep account with Berkshire Wealth Management, and we need to decide if we want to reinvest those or not. I know you had talked about something really, really short-term. So I just reached out to her and I asked for any any information on like short-term CDs because that's what we had invested in was CDs. And her response back was for the very short term, treasury bills are more attractive than CDs. One month T-bill yield is 5.37, three months is 5.4. Those may move with the Fed increase, but she seems to think that they've mostly factored that into today's levels, so it's not going to change a lot. But I don't know what the timing on the truck is or any of that.
So that would be about the only thing that would affect that is the timeline on the truck.
Yeah, and I'm not sure what they're going to require at the time we order one. And I can I can find that out Monday.
Are we a month out from?
Or Wednesday tomorrow.
Are we at least a month out from buying the truck?
Yeah, the, I would be, we'd get it the middle of November, so.
We we could do the one month then with the money, right?
Yeah, I just, when we go to order it, I'm not sure what they're going to require. But I think you'd be safe to put it in for a month.
Okay.
There's not much difference between the three and the one.
Yeah.
Great.
We just throw it right in the one month and then until we till we know exactly and we may just keep rolling it over until the truck comes or something. Okay. I guess that that doesn't really require a motion or anything. I think that can just consensus.
Yep.
Yep.
And I, I think I kept rolling and went over the warrant, so we'll read the motions on those.
Correct.
If I recall correctly.
You are correct. All right, I'll move that we approve warrants 24003 and 24004.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you, Julie. And here is.
And you sent us the end of year numbers, right?
I emailed them and I left a physical, one physical copy, but I didn't know if you guys prefer digital copies.
I looked at the email.
Does anybody have any questions? Here's all the paperwork that we talked about.
I guess I just, I have a question just to make sure that I'm reading this correctly. It looks like from in the income section, these negative numbers on budget balance mean that we got more income than anticipated, correct?
Where are you?
I'm on page, the first page, under tax-related, other government, and the fees and fines and things. We have budget, we have actual, then we have budget balance.
Oh, okay, I have percentage. I didn't do the budget balance, but yes.
Yeah, so and then we have actual budget, then we have the percentage. So where it says budget balance, the negative numbers in that indicate that our actual was bigger than the budget, which means we got more money than anticipated. Okay. And then in the expenses, when we see that, like under payroll, and for example, when we see that the budget balance is a positive number, that means we spent less money than we anticipated.
Right.
So on the whole, it looks like in our budget, we got more money than we had budgeted and we spent less than we had budgeted.
So if you look, like on page, I would assume 2, for the general fund budget, the 11 numbers, there's like a total revenue budget and actual.
Yep.
Okay, so we were, we collected more in that one, but then like if you look at, so our general fund budget, we did end in the surplus, but like if you look at the highway, we did not.
Right, okay.
We collected more revenue than we anticipated.
Okay.
We still overspent.
All right. Making sure that I'm reading it correctly.
Yes.
Copies for anybody that wants to see everything that's going down. Anybody else have any questions for Julie on? Guess we're good. Thank you.
All right.
Anything from the emergency management director? No. Anything from health officer? No. Wastewater treatment, Jill sent some stuff, right?
Yes. So Jill Marsano of Vermont Utility Management Services sent along a June 2023 DMR and labs and provided an operations update from June 1st to July 14th. Would you like to hear the highlights?
Sure.
Or you're, you're good, okay. Um, so sledge hauling was performed by VTUMs, 7,500 gallons from the back septic tank to Rutland Wastewater Treatment Facility. The May 2023 DMR uploaded to the ANR online and was submitted. They collected the quarterly and monthly samples and dropped them at the lab, collected the second bi-weekly and recollected post-UV nitrogen grab as needed to be in bottle with acid, received four 55-gallon drums of Epic WW58 from Holland Company, and submitted the DMR via ANR online and ordered head repair kit for chem feed pump that's not working well. And outstanding items, working to get transfer switch repaired. Jim helped confirm the password to the equipment. Jim is the electrician. The right-hand heater will be addressed after the change in fiscal year by the HVAC tech. One manhole to be repaired at the top of New Street by VTUMs. Controls to update at Spruce Gump Pump Station to get pump one back online with Tim from Avanti and the transponders to replace on clarifiers with Tim. And that's the end of the highlight reel from the treatment facility.
Any questions?
Here, looks like someone spilled on a bike outside.
Didn't lose no skin, so he's good. All right. Facilities report.
Yes. So the library has requested to use the town hall auditorium on October 7th for the third annual Freddie Shahadi Acoustic Show and was seeking the board's approval for that.
Shouldn't be a problem. Perry did.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay. Anything else on the facilities reports?
Um, I don't think so, not for me, anyway.
But now that now that we're in the new fiscal year, there's two, the, there's the second heater in the in the wastewater facility that needs to be replaced. And we also got to consider replacing the condenser for the upstairs air conditioning because it was found to be defective when he hooked up the compressor. And he was able to patch it enough to get us through this last weekend, which, well, he just put some more gas in it Friday. But he knew, he knew it was had a slow leak, he couldn't quite get it fixed perfect, but.
He said something about repairing the coil versus replacing the whole condenser block.
He's replacing the?
Replacing the coil versus the whole condenser.
Okay. So I'll, I'll, I'll push him some more and see. Freddie Shahadi's thing, we have to just kind of play by the weather. See if it's going to need.
It's October.
Could be hot.
Could be hot, it could.
It's early, so it could be.
Probably have to fix some furnace.
Oh, and Deb said that there's plans to get the front door fixed.
I was going to ask about that.
So we have, we have an action to take place on that, okay? What happened to that?
Um, I don't know.
Someone in a hurry to leave?
I don't know.
Was it determined how it got damaged or?
We never found any.
It wasn't clear on this surveillance, okay.
I just haven't been able to watch that many hours of it.
I'm sure.
That's fair.
I have watched it quite a bit extensively. There's times where I've had to skip because I just, like Julie, I just don't have the time to do a 24-hour. Found a lot of other stuff, but didn't see anything with regard to the door. Not that it doesn't exist, I just didn't come across it either.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
If someone can be shown to have caused it, then there's an action that can be asked to have them pay for it, usually.
If they have the money to pay for it.
If they have the money.
Okay.
I'm going to volunteer Frank to watch days and days of video and figure out who did it.
That's what we have AI for.
Hold your unfinished business, Jessica, you have some?
Um, there was a comment on the... Let's see. Lighting on...
Side of the building.
Elevator not working.
Approach to elevator.
Yeah, so that, that walkway out there, there's a light out there on the side of the building that's not working. And I don't realize the elevator light...
Somebody told us that today, who told us that today?
Nancy.
That would be me.
Okay, go ahead, Nancy.
Yeah, so when you go out of there at night, and Harley knows, because we went out late last night after the planning commission meeting, there is no light out there at all. I shouldn't say no, the one middle light has a very, barely glow, and the other two are dead.
All right, do we have a handyman? We don't even have a handyman, okay.
What kind of lights are they? Are they just bulbs?
Well, we need a bulb and our bulb downstairs, too. Where? The bulb downstairs.
Well, I'm going to have to go out.
Oh, he was here this morning, nobody caught him.
Yep.
Got to get up earlier. I let him in at six o'clock.
I guess we just have to see if he can swing by and correct them. If you could talk to him and, you know what, if he can find a time to connect, that would be awesome.
Yeah, I'll make a list of them before I get ahold of them.
All right, my old business stuff?
Okay, so...
There's also the ORI constables thing, too.
Should we do the constables first?
He's going to do, you get ready going.
All right, so, the two things that I asked about last time, the energy resilience assessments, I applied, filled out the application for those online, that was for the library and the town hall, and I've also been meeting with Stephanie, our project manager for the pedestrian accessibility projects with the sidewalks. Last time, we chose the way that we wanted to select the firms, and so she and I have gone through the list of at the ready firms, and we have selected the top three, and we're busy ranking those. So either next time meeting or the time after that, we will have a proposal for the select board about which firm that we suggest to go with, and then the select board can make a decision on that.
Correct.
My other thing I wanted to report on was regarding a grant we got some time ago, the Vermont Outdoor Recreation Communities Grant. This was the one about the potential wealth home center in West Paulette and about repaving, we worked on this together with Rupert, and, not repaving, resurfacing the rail trail parking lots, both in West Paulette and in Rupert. So regarding the resurfacing, the person who's from our committee who's been working on that is getting a contract together with Power to Move Excavating, who won the bidding, and are going to be, this contract is to resurface the two parking areas in West Paulette, the small one, and the New York border slash Old Depot parking area, and then also to resurface a couple ones in Rupert. When this contract is approved by everybody involved in the grant committee, it will be up to us as the town of Paulette to sign this. It's entirely paid for with grant money, but it will be a reimbursement, because since Paulette and Rupert are working together, Paulette is the lead town, so we're going to have to sign this. So I'm assuming that in two weeks, I'll bring that contract to us to just approve and sign for this resurfacing of those parking lots.
Sounds good, thank you. Does V-Trans play a role in that?
Let me see if V-Trans is mentioned in here. Yes, the V-Trans, it has to be completed to the satisfaction of the V-Trans rail trail program. And the V-Trans folks have been involved with this process. It does look like they are planning to work on some stuff in this, in our West Paulette lot that is causing bad drainage, so they want to regrade the entire parking area and existing potholes to allow for sheet flow away from the road shoulder. So they want to improve the drainage there. All right, and then, one more thing, my last thing in old business is, when Devin came to talk to us, I think about a month ago, about the municipal technical assistance program, and he asked us if we wanted to go ahead and do that, and then I know he's, he's on his honeymoon right now, but I was thinking that I would like us to, if we're willing to take him up on that, to vote to do that, so it costs us nothing, there's lots of things that we need, and we can start then working with Rutland Regional Planning Commission on what grants they can write for us. So I guess I would move to, to accept the municipal technical assistance program and work with Rutland Regional Planning Commission on that.
I'd second that.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried. Excellent.
And I know we had a number of options, you were talking about the, you had an idea, Rich, I don't remember what, it was the, the building for the road crew. Yeah, the town garage, you had thought of, and we also had some other thoughts.
Sewer, sewer there begin to...
Sewer plant, it's a possibility, yeah, there's, so, we can, we can talk to Devin about...
With Gerald and... Okay, super.
Great, I will let Devin know, once he's back from his honeymoon. That's it for me for old business.
So you're set?
I'm set.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, what can you update us on the town constables?
Well, you, I forwarded everybody an email, so Bill Humphries provided some information to Tom Covino about, which came from, looks like somebody else.
Looks like Bill Humphries sent it to us a while ago, and it kind of looked like they were going to provide more information to us.
It wasn't entirely clear to me what the next steps were from this email.
I did not quite understand it either, I just wanted to be sure you all had a chance to talk about it, but I don't have any grand tidbits of knowledge to necessarily offer, but I didn't want to drop the ball.
We haven't, we haven't heard anything from Dave or Tom regarding this since two weeks ago?
Not, other than the fact that Tom forwarded it to me and asked me to send it all, send it along to all of you, so...
From the email, it sounded like there might be a difficulty in that we don't spend a large portion of our budget on police, on constables, so that we might not be considered a law enforcement agency. That was kind of what I got from the first part of the email, but again, it was a bit unclear.
It sounded like there was more information to follow before we could really see what the next step had to be, but...
The one thing that I, that just caught my eye, Deb, maybe you can, or I don't know if you know about it, but, did the, this was from back in May, do we know if the constables received their laptop?
Have they received their phone?
Yes, Tom Covino does have the laptop.
Okay.
He, he came and picked it up and took it to Vinnie, to have Vinnie do what needed to be done.
Okay. Because that was a big, that was a portion of this email that he had sent back in May, just saying that that would be a great tool so that they can at least begin to document what they do, file incident reports and things like that. So I can follow back up with them if you'd like and figure out what actual action steps we would need to do.
Thank you. Frank?
Question is, that process that you're going through, is there, would there be, there's some news in Rollin' Herald today, would that alter your direction in regards to any of those past questions that were brought up in past meetings?
Not at this point, so... Harley?
Does Vermont League of Citizens and Towns have any kind of expertise in this area, or can you provide advice?
Guidance or something? I, I don't know that anyone's reached out yet, so... We'll see where, where we can go with that, and keep this, keep this rolling to, to come to a conclusion of what's going to be best. Yes?
Is this the time to bring up what I thought should be in maybe public comments at the end about Ruth Byrne? Is this the time to bring it up, since you're talking about the constables? Where does it go on the agenda?
Bobby, I guess right now, I'm having trouble hearing your story, but...
Oh, I was just asking, where on the agenda could we make public comments about the Ruth Byrne situation?
Public comment, probably under the public comment system that we're ready to go into right now.
I have one new business.
One new business, after new business.
My new business was that I've been made aware of a grant program, I think Rutland Regional Planning Commission made us aware of this, called the Vermont Community EV Chargers Grant Program. I don't know if this is the same grant that, that Mr. Mack is applying for or not, but...
I have not applied for that yet.
Okay.
I'm just getting cost on everything, cost of the batteries, cost of the charging stations, and they're going to be the fast charge stations that I would recommend that we use, because they're going, they're going to be suitable to charge in like thirty to forty minutes, pretty much any car, and we don't want a charging station that's going to take several hours or overnight, we're looking for something fast charge.
Thirty minutes, and then they go in your store? That's the plan?
Well...
Yeah, absolutely, it's a good plan.
They can walk around town, they can do a lot of things, because it's going to be parallel to thirty, and it's just going to make it feasible, a place to stop.
But what I wanted to talk about for the municipality was that municipalities can also apply for these, and they, they can be for workplaces or public attractions, and I, for municipality, there would only be a five percent match, so I didn't know if we were interested in potentially applying for a grant for an EV charger someplace in Paulette or West Paulette, besides the ones that Mr. Mack is thinking of getting. My thoughts, I mean, there's money for it now, my thoughts were, just off the top of my head, for potential spots might be near the library would be a possibility, or in West Paulette, though I'm not sure exactly where in West Paulette. If we could put one by the rail trail somewhere, it would be nice, yeah.
Gibb?
My comment on that would be, these are great ideas, and the only way I want to do it is if I get enough solar panels in so that it doesn't put a draw on the grid to do it, because these are a pretty big draw on the grid, and whose power bill, and yeah, it'll probably be with a credit card to charge them, but who's, who has the capability of putting in enough power station to do this? It's a great idea, but when you start doing this, you've got to have a pretty big system to take that load and that, that ability to charge. Just keep it in the back of your head, when you start saying, oh, the library, well, what's the power supply to the library, are they able to do that? Because when you start doing this, I mean, I have a hundred and forty-six panels, I had to put a whole new system in to support that, for just my solar. Now, that's me providing out to the grid, it goes the same way going the other way. If you're drawing from the grid, you have to have the capability of supporting this. Just wanted you to keep that in mind. I mean, these grants mean very little if it's just to put a station in, and then you have to revamp your whole system.
And that, that's, that's the reason why I wanted to ask about it, obviously it would have to be somewhere where we already have electricity, but I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention and get feedback on if we wanted to think of a place.
So after that charging station would go in, who would, would, they would pay to charge, and that would cover the cost of the...
Yeah, that, that would be the idea. There's, I, I tried to read through the grant paperwork, and it would require that people would have to be able to pay with a credit or debit card, so it would have to be set up, it would, they, it wouldn't, couldn't be set up so they could only pay with an app, right? It would have to be that they could pay with a debit card or credit card in some way. So yeah, then they would pay for their charging, so, once it was set up, it should pay for itself.
It wouldn't cost a town any time.
That would be the plan.
Frank?
When I went to the main New Hampshire-Vermont thing at the New Hampshire Motor Speedway, they had a big meeting, and the Vermont V-Trans Energy Green Person was there and some of her people, and there was a person in charge of locating EV power stations, and it's, they have a certain amount of money from the federal government as part of the Volkswagen, you know, fiddling with their numbers settlement, and so there's enough to cover the major highways in Vermont with this stuff, but there's going to be some left over, so it might be good to see if we get in on a first come, first served basis, because that may be free, because it's coming out of that Volkswagen settlement.
Harley?
So people pay to charge their cars, where does that money go? To the provider of the electricity?
I don't know entirely, I would assume that if the town owned it, it would go to the town.
I was just curious, because it was a grant program, and, you know, it's a state, expect your reimbursement, and my experience in helping to install a couple of these was the panels typically needed to be upgraded, because it's a big, a big draw.
See, I installed one of my barn, and it was fine, it didn't need to be upgraded, but I had recently put in a new panel a couple years ago.
Yes, and, and so that's why, one of them was fine, the newer house, but I will look at the library to see what kind of panel we have.
And there, it's possible, I'll look in the grant information, but there might be money in the grant also to upgrade the wiring, there sometimes is.
I see.
It depends on, depends on the wording. So it sounds like I should contact the person who sent this to me and get a little more information about the details of the grant. That sound good?
Thank you.
Okay, I will do that.
I've got a couple questions, naive, but, is, are you paying for the amount of power that you receive from the station? Are you paying, is there a formula for the timeframe that you're connected to it, is, what, I guess what I'm saying is, one incentive does, does a person have to plug into it and then be back there to take their car off the charger in an hour, so that the next person waiting in line can plug their car in? If their car is completely charged, they just go in? They live in the apartment above Gibb's store, they plug their car in at four o'clock in the afternoon, they go in, have dinner, go to bed, and have no reason to unplug it till morning when they go to work in the morning?
Yep.
That's not how it works. You, you pay on the amount of energy that you use and the time allotted that you use it, and generally it costs the consumer like fifteen dollars to full charge an EV car, which is still, and you get four hundred miles.
Yeah, I mean, you can't, you can't put gas in for fifteen dollars.
What incentive do they have to come back and disconnect from it?
It shuts off.
Right, but their car can sit there and ten people come up the valley and want to pull in, and there's four cars plugged into the four chargers, and those people just went, went home and went to bed, and they don't care, because they're going to have full charge in the morning.
And I guess, we'll have, if that turned into something like that, Bob, we'd probably have to police it.
Right, I, I just, I just wonder, I, I know people pass through town, but, but there's no incentive to, to unplug from it until you're ready, if you get in your car.
Maybe there, maybe there is, until you, the meter keeps going somehow on your card into it.
Right. If you just plugged in for an extra hour, take it back.
If you can be full charged, but if you're using it for six hours, maybe they're still charging your car. I don't know.
No, I, I just, just curious, I just could picture pulling up there, needing to charge your car to get to the next town, and waiting and waiting for somebody that...
I don't think... I don't think it's like that, I see them at Stewart shops, I see them all over the place, and I don't see that being anything like that, nobody blocks them in or parks them in.
Nancy, do you have a question, your hand up?
Yeah, just a couple of comments, I know back when I was on the energy committee, we looked at putting a charging station in town. At that time, I think they quoted us something like nine thousand dollars, um, to put one in. The charges, the town would get like pennies on part of the charge, most of the charging money goes back to the energy company. Um, and the other thing, at that time, chargers, they said, you know, figure a half an hour a car. But what I would suggest, I don't know if anybody has contacts in Granville government, they have a two or three charging stations over by the, I don't know what that street is, by the, I'm gonna say by the knitting shop, if anybody knows where the knitting shop is in Granville. But I have never seen a car at any of those charging stations.
Yeah.
So, I get, I would, I would suggest if this is a road that the town wants to go down, that they speak to somebody in Granville and find out what the economics are and whether or not it's, it brings any benefits to the town.
Thank you. Frank?
The speakers for the state of Vermont said that Vermont's, one of the major, major industry is tourism, and tourists are coming to Vermont with EV vehicles. And that's why they're promoting out this expansion of EV power stations, is basically to be a friendly place for tourists versus some other states.
Okay, thank you. Any more new business?
Did you sign the warrants?
Uh, no.
We signed the wastewater one, but not the.
You signed your wastewater.
Thank you for reminding us. So I'm here. I think that's what they're working on. No? Somebody have something else that they already signed, lingering?
Warrants and then the regular.
Looks like maybe on the back of that one. Spots? I don't know. Oh, just the tax rates, we gotta sign this for the tax rates. Okay, here's the warrants. Oh, I forgot to get that one.
You certainly did.
I did. Tragedy. All right, it's all on you, Rich.
Gotta build a bridge. Gotta build a bridge, can't afford pens. There goes the pen budget, right there.
Well, you're BYOP.
Yeah. I tried that at the last meeting, it didn't work.
Bring your own pen?
There, everyone gets paid. Public comment, Martha?
Uh, yes, I did watch the, uh, video of your meeting on July eleventh, and saw the disturbance caused by Ruth Byrne and the constables trying to explain to you what they could and couldn't do. Since that time, uh, evidently she's caused more trouble at Matt's Market, and, uh, according to Mark McChesney, she also beat up a cellmate uh, when she was in the Rutland Correctional Facility, and that's why she's now at the Chittenden Prison for Women. So I'm just wondering, how, how can, can any of you stay in touch with the situation and warn us if this woman comes back to town? Because, uh, I'm, I'm terrified of her. And, uh, last two weeks ago, there was another resident here testifying how he felt fear. Uh, so is, is there anything you can do, or are there any updates on when she's, might be getting out of the Chittenden Prison for Women?
I really don't know, the only thing that I, the lady at the sheriff's department told me, said if you call the courthouse, they'll tell you what happened after the hearing. It's public after the hearing. Uh, I did not call because we heard from another source, and I've never been involved in that. I, it looks like you can go online and see what's going on on the hearings and stuff, but it's, I didn't have a lot of time to look into that, but as far as, is really knowing what's going on, I, I don't know how we can track it, so to speak.
So, so going online, that would be the Rutland Court?
I, I started looking, you go to Rutland District Court, and it lists all the, all the cases for the day and stuff like that, and I just looked for a few minutes, but, and I'm, I'm not that gifted at, at searching stuff, so, um, it was a struggle for me to find what I was trying to find, but the lady at the court said, or at the sheriff's office, said that you can, you can call the courthouse and, and they'll tell you the outcome of the cases, so. Harley?
This doesn't shed direct light on release, but, uh, the Rutland Herald had a pretty extensive article in today's paper. The Rutland Herald, yeah. Yes, uh, that Frank, uh, mentioned to me, and I just read it. And when she does post bail or is released, um, there's conditions of release, which may be worth reading to find that, uh, it may address some of the concerns of the.
So, yeah, if we knew what the conditions were, if they highlighted them, then you could call the, the police, and I guess they would act accordingly, but basically, it's all a police issue, there's really nothing we can do that I know of, and, you know, I've never experienced anything like this in town, but there's nothing that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment tonight? Okay. Anybody wanna make the motion?
I'll move, will you adjourn?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Post? Carry. Thank you all for coming.